Good morning. Today is Thursday, February 3rd. This is our Moore County Board of Education Budget Work Session. We're glad to see everyone here this morning, and I would like to call the meeting to order. Is there a motion for approval of the agenda?
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This time, Ms. Colwell.
Hey.
How about leading us in Pledge of Allegiance this morning?
Sure, please rise. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Bill was taking my thunder.
At this time, I would like to take a moment of silence just to remember we, within the last, I don't know, two, three weeks, lost a former student at Pinecrest High School. So let's just take a moment to reflect and remember him and his family. Thank you. Today is our follow-up of our budget information that will initiate framework this year for what the superintendent will present to the board in March. We've done a lot of work already behind the scenes. David is not here this morning. He has some personal work-related matters to attend to. But he and Libby and myself have already had a couple of meetings with Mr. Cox and with Dr. Locklear and their team to begin prep work and presenting the information to everyone this morning. As you remember, we took a long amount of time, I think it was back in November, to where we really dived into looking at some line-by-line items of the budget and how the overall budget comes together. Lots of great questions, lots of good conversation that helped us get to where we are this morning. So today, we are here for Dr. Locklear and his team, Mr. Cox, to provide information, ask questions along the way, and we just want to come away this morning with just a solid, good foundation for getting to our final steps of recommending the budget. Dr. Locklear?
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Board members, good morning. Want to again, as Ms. Thompson mentioned, Chair Thompson, that the board budget committee want to thank you for your time. We met twice in January, reviewed some foundational items and projections, and got some feedback and questions and good discussion. Appreciate Mr. Hansley and Ms. Thompson, Ms. Carter, for having, devoting that time. Also want to thank Mr. Cox for his dedication of continuing to put together this information and his expertise, and he's been significantly under the weather, but he's getting better, and I appreciate his perseverance through all that. So he said he may be coughing a bit or doing some different things today, but he's still getting better, and we're thinking about him and appreciate that, appreciate his perseverance. But this morning, we're gonna, as Chair Thompson mentioned, we're gonna be going over some foundational items and review, overview of foundational items of how the budget is built here in our district, share some background with that, and also look at the impact of the late-pass state budget in November. There's still some impacts that we discussed with the board budget committee that we still have to address, and based on the feedback from the committee, we're bringing a recommendation of how to address that with our classified salary scale that we plan to bring to the board Monday. So Mr. Cox has just spent a little time walking through that with the board this morning to make sure you've got a good understanding of that. We also, of course, are gonna get into projecting into the next year and looking at our continued revised funding cliff that we've got to be thinking about as we're looking out over the next couple of physical years. And I think there's gonna be a common theme or common narrative that we're gonna hear this morning, and that common theme and common narrative is really the impact of fixed cost and fixed cost increases. And when you're talking about the impact of fixed costs, you're really talking about taking care of our people, because that's where our increased fixed costs are. And so we're gonna take some time to look at that this morning and what our projections are until the next year. And then maybe one of the biggest desired outcomes today is to get your feedback as Mr. Cox and myself prepare for, in the next couple of weeks, the final preparations for presenting the superintendent's proposed budget. Is there feedback, is there additional questions, is there a consensus from the board on additional information that you may want to see or included in that proposed budget? And so with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Cox and let him start walking through the information. Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you, Dr. Locklear. As you mentioned, here are the topics that we'll cover today, which go ahead and jump right into them. Some of these slides are refreshers that you've seen before, but just want to bring it back to the forefront, just as reminders. Our 2020-21 sources of revenue are broken down here. As you see, sixty-five percent from state funding, twenty-three percent from local, and just under twelve percent from federal funds there. And here's a breakdown of where we spent that money. You see, the two big categories are salaries and employee benefits, which is hospitalization, retirement. Eighty-five percent of our expenses are in salaries and benefits. Then when you add in that purchase services, which are contracts, you could probably inch it up another one or two percent because we have contracts for people. So you're somewhere between eighty-five and ninety percent on people, seven percent on supplies, one percent on capital, and two percent for that charter flow-through where we have to give per pupil amount to the charters from what the county gives us. So here's historical trend on student population back to 2008, 2009. We've grown, we've decreased, we've grown again, pandemic hit, and you see, here's where the pandemic was, but we grew this year back to 12,744 students. And working with Kate Fall, Dr. Metcalf, Kate Fall, and the Planning and Accountability Research Team, an initial estimate of projection is about the same number of students for next year. Here's a historical trend on state funding per pupil. As you see, we took a dip back into recession. It slowly has come back, and in 2021, we were at $6,800. I will note, the state per pupil average is 7,144. So we're a little bit below what the state average is on per pupil funding basis in Moore County. And this is just a reminder, back in 2012, 13, and the reason it's a reminder here is because it has an impact today still. We used to be able to convert teacher positions at the average salary, which was allowed us to generate additional dollars, to hire additional resources for our district. The state took that away, and now when you convert, you can still convert, but you have to convert at the beginning teacher salary. So you're not gonna be able to convert to make any money to have additional resources when you do that conversion. So it's the impact of sixteen to twenty teachers that we used to be able to get through this conversion process that we're no longer able to get. Some other significant impacts are state mandated benefit rate increases. The state puts that in place for all state-paid employees, and we have to cover that for our locally-funded employees as well. Last year, the retirement rate was 21.68 percent. This year, it jumped up to 22.89 percent, a six percent increase in the amount that we have to pay retirement for each employee. Hospitalization was $6,326 last year. This year, we're at $7,019 per employee, which is eleven percent increase. And this, again, as I mentioned, applies to all personnel. Where the impact is for us is those locally-paid employees and us having to increase these rates, these benefit rates. So fixed costs, when we look at that, what does that really mean? When you look at this chart here, this is what it costs average per unit for labor, essentially what it costs to cover an employee. Back in 2008, we were at 52,000. You go up two or three years, only $2,2500 increase over that period of time. Now you look at 2017, 18, we had jumped up to 59,000, almost $59,000 per employee. Well, now you move three, four years ahead, it's $10,000 increase in what it costs to fund one employee. So we're at almost $70,000 in '21, '22 for what it costs to cover one employee.
Let me ask you a question. When you say "per employee," are you talking about the average of everyone from a cafeteria to worker?
We're looking at, yeah, just the average of what it is, taking the total number of employees, dividing by what the state gives us for those salary and benefits, and come up with that average.
Do you know offhand what the cost of a teacher is?
Well, the average is almost $73,000 for a teacher.
Okay. That's what I'm asking, yes, thank you.
So that just shows the impact of increasing fixed cost over time and trying to maintain the same level of staffing that we have. So there's been questions about fund balance. Here's a historical chart of our local fund balance. Back during this time, it was race to the top dollars, where the district was putting away race to the top dollars to increase our fund balance. We did staffing cuts and different things and kind of weaned off of fund balance down here. And in 2021, as we presented there in the financial audit, we have right at $6 million of fund balance. However, as part of our budget resolution, we maintain a minimum of $2 million in fund balance as a cash flow for deferred grants, different things where we don't get that money upfront, but we have those costs until we get that reimbursement back. And then, as part of the budget process that you approved back in November, we allocated 2.1 million of this fund balance to cover our operations for the '21-'22 school year. So we really only have around $2 million, just under $2 million, of fund balance available for use for expenses should things come up. And we'll talk a little bit more about that. So you say, "Oh, well, we got 6.1 million." Well, we really don't, because the majority of that is allocated to obligations that we have for the district. Fund eight is another area where we talk about fund balance. It's our local special operations where it's primarily grant-driven monies that we get. We've got 4.7, almost 4.8 million in fund balance as of June 30th, 2021. What makes up that is about 2.4 million of that is in Medicaid reimbursement, and that money has to be spent on EC and student health services. We have 1 million of recurring funds that we are paying out of that for EC staff, nurses, counselor, and psychologist. Additional makeup of that fund balance is 1.2 million in impact aid funding, and we historically have about $500,000 of that 1.2 million in recurring impact aid expenses each year. And also, part of that 1.2 million, because we don't get impact aid money on July 1, we've got to go through the application process, and it comes in in two or three increments, we have to have some money set aside for cash flow for that as well. And then we also, we have to pay our workers' compensation insurance at the beginning of the year at one time, and that's another $250,000 that we have to front. And then throughout the year, we get monies coming back in to replenish that. So you have a million there in cash flow. And then the remaining portion of that, 4.7, 4.8 million dollars, are specific grants or specific programs that have generated this money that has to be used for those programs, like Drivers Ed, for example, IT, pre-K, preschool, STEM robotics, or just some different examples of grants and monies that generate revenue that go into this fund that have to be spent on those specific programs, so it's not just a pot that's out there for anybody to use. Just want to make sure that is highlighted. And although we do have fund balance, it's not gonna fix our recurring fixed cost increases. You know, these are types of things that really should be used for one-time expenses. Try not to use recurring expenses in fund balance, because fund balance will run out This chart is, excuse me, this chart is just a historical per pupil funding. Over the last few years, you see, this first column is our state funding. We're funded $6,800, 107 out of 115 districts. Federal, 837, 109. Local, 22, 35 out of 115. Overall funding for Moore County schools is just under $10,000, which puts us at 110 out of 115 school districts.
Is it $10,000 per pupil?
Yes, sir.
What's the difference? You gave us two earlier numbers of 6,874, 44. What's the difference between those two and the 10,000?
So the 68 and the 71, 44?
Yeah, 71, 44, right.
That's state funding specifically. The 10,000 makes up state, federal, and local funding.
Because that's the whole thing.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And the 68 is our amount for state funding, but the 71, 44 is the average for the state, Mr. Booth.
Right, okay, yes, yes. I see that in my notes. I stay corrected, thank you.
All right, so let's, we've talked about some historical information, historical numbers. Let's talk a little bit about building the budget and the different aspects of a budget. The first aspect is continuation budget. What a continuation budget is, you have to ask yourself, what will it take for us to remain as-is, provide the same level of services that we provided in the prior year? So you look for efficiencies where you can, find reductions, you look at your zero-based budgeting methodology and see where we can reduce or where we're gonna have increased expenses to remain as-is. Some things that go into continuation budget, you have to factor in student changes. Are you gonna increase, are you gonna decrease? Utility rate projections, are you gonna have increased utility costs? You know, are we changing our square footage? New buildings coming on, more efficient? And then, you know, one of the big things, the fixed costs, the salary and benefits that the state puts in their budget on our current staff that, you know, aren't covered for our locally-funded employees, or it could be, you know, it's unfunded mandate from the state. You know, they may not completely fund what they put in in the budget.
Mr. Cox, you sort of jumped over the one that says inflationary cost impacts on non-salary purchases. We all know that prices just are going up. It doesn't matter whether it's a loaf of bread or a case of Diet Coke.
Correct.
Everything continues to go up. How are you figuring that, based on the national inflation rates? How are we gonna stay ahead of those inflationary costs?
That's a great question. Don't really know how we're gonna stay ahead of it. We're not getting additional monies for those non-salary-related items. The main thing, we have to make sure that we do take care of our salaries and benefits, and then what's left, it may be that we're not able to buy as many supplies as we have in the past without some additional revenue sources for that.
Do we have, do we, I can't read that far. Do we have a projected inflation over the next, over the next 12 months or the next 18 months? Does the Fed give you that or some other federal source?
So what I really looked at is the primary things that we factored in, as you'll see a little bit later, are your salary and benefit costs, our student changes, our utility rate increases, working with Duke Energy and John Barath over there and Anthony McNeil, our energy conservation manager, to project those increases for those types of things.
Are we also including the building costs and the like, or is this simply services and supplies?
Now, when you say "building costs," what do you mean?
I'm talking about there's a faucet that needs to be replaced, et cetera, things such as that.
So we have not increased the maintenance budget for those types of things?
Okay.
So it's more supplies and services at this point?
So I want to know what we're basically looking at. Are we looking at a budget involving only supplies and services?
So we're not to the budget part yet.
Oh, okay.
We'll get to our projections a little bit later on and what we've got in there, and then we'll, you know, get the feedback from you guys on that. But this is just the basis of what should be in a continuation budget as we look towards the next year.
Mr. Barath, I think it would be interesting to, at some point, for you to share with the board, with our schools that we have maintained over the past two, couple of years or so that have been sold off. And we know that the annual projection, I believe, that we had got for maintenance of those buildings were somewhere around $2,220 a month, okay? So how, based on projections, at least for this coming up year, sort of what is the offset of what we've done away with that we don't have to spend dollars on anymore? And then what is the projection for what's remaining as far as up or down utility cost, if there is a way that you can just give us sort of a ballpark on that?
I'll give you that.
It may not be enough. I mean, like Libby said, with everything that you buy and purchase has gone up tons, you know, from a dollar to $2.50 or $3.00. So it would just be sort of interesting to see what our projection is on our monthly utility cost for the next year.
And it is worthwhile noting, I'm trying to turn this thing off. It's worthwhile noting that when housing prices go up and the per-mil rate remains the same, the county does get an inflationary increase. And it is extremely important, certainly to me and I hope the rest of the board, that we see part of that inflationary increase that the county is getting on their property taxes, and that flows to the schools. Because when I was talking about the cost of a faucet, I mean, I'm sure the cost of a faucet has gone up 20, 30 percent, I don't know. And we've kind of keep maintaining these schools, just a thought on that. And what the county, when we go to the county, we have to remind them that they do get an inflationary bump, and we need that in order to maintain the services that we're maintaining in addition to, I hope, increasing the services, because we've got some things that we need to get accomplished in the next year, especially in terms of grade-level performance of our
So that's the basis of a continuation budget, trying to remain as-is going to next year. The next type of budget is an expansion budget. These are areas where the board has priorities, additional things that they would like to see prioritized aboard this. That's why we're here today, to try to get feedback from the board on what their priorities may be, you know, outside of a continuation budget, to figure out what we can include or if there is a desire to include any expansion budget items in the request. So just want to kind of summarize, this is more of a historical slide here. What this is, this is showing our continuation and expansion items for the fiscal year '22 budget. So a continuation budget item here would be the salary costs, increase for employees and hospitalization and retirement rates, increase in our supplemental and other fixed costs, projected charter group. These are all continuation budget items, things that we have to do to maintain where we are, maintain the same level of services. Now, these two bottom items are more of expansion items. The board chose to implement the classified salary schedule this year was an expansion item. And then this last item was more of a, not a board-chosen expansion item, but a state-directed expansion item where they provided some bonuses to state-funded employees, and we needed to match the same for our local-funded employees. So that was additional cost, but it's still an expansion item. About 2.1 million of total continuation and expansion items, and how is that covered? I just mentioned a few slides ago, we allocated 2.1 million of our fund balance to be able to cover these items. So now, as we're talking about the county budget request, what should it include? It should include your continuation budget items at a minimum, make sure you include all the students in the county that we're gonna have to fund, which includes those students who attend Moore County schools and as well as those students that attend any charter school that resides in Moore County. And try to have the best guess for salary and benefits, oops, sorry. And we'll talk about our projections for this here in a few minutes. Then, are there any expansion budget items? Are there any priorities of the board that we just have to have to put into the budget request to the county? And then, do we have any contingencies? The fund balance a little bit, it's potential contingency that we like to have instead of depleting that all the way down. So now, we've talked a little bit about building the budget and the things that go into building a budget. I want to talk a little bit about the impact of the late passage of the state budget for fiscal year '22 on our current year budget. As you know, the state didn't pass their budget until November of 2021, and two of the things that are in there that impacted us significantly is a minimum wage for all employees of $13, and then they also provided a 2.5 percent increase for those above that $13 per hour. Things that I want to highlight here, Moore County schools is not fully funded by the state for this. They said, "Hey, here you have to do this, here's money for it." But when we estimated what it would cost to do it, when the General Assembly asked us for estimates, they funded just a little more than half of what we said it would cost for the state. they funded just a little more than half of what we said it would cost for the state-paid employees. DPI could not provide us an exact amount of how it broke down, between the $13 per hour, the 2.5% increase, and the benefit rate increases. When we went back to ask, well, how much funding did we actually get for these specific items that say were line items in the state budget? They couldn't provide us that information. The increase does not address compression on the new salary scale. It actually creates compression by going to the minimum of $13. And we'll talk a little bit more about what that is, if you're not familiar with that. And so this does have an impact on the current year budget. It's the item that Dr. Locklear talked about, that we're going to bring back next Monday, about how to address some of this.
Mr. Cox.
Come here, come here.
All right, you said that the mandated minimum wage or the 2.5% increase was covered for state employees only at about half?
So we estimated between salary and benefits that it was going to cost us about $600,000 for our state-funded employees.
And they funded it at what?
We got for the $13 per hour, the 2.5% and the other retirement rates, we got $500,000 in total.
Okay, so we're short $100,000 there. And they don't touch our locally paid classified people at all. But we've got, but we need to, in good faith, increase our locally paid ones to the same amount.
Because those employees don't know what their source of funding is.
Right, and I know it changes from one day to the next.
Correct.
Yes, ma'am.
And we can't have a two-tiered system of employees. That's just not, not in the cards.
Correct, correct.
So Mr. Cox, with the cost of $600,000, you said for state, right? We got $500,000, okay? So for a local...
But the cost of the $13 minimum wage was 600,000.
Okay.
We got $500,000 to cover the cost of the $13 minimum wage.
Okay.
And moving those other employees up 2.5%.
Okay, all right. And so...
So what was the total cost on moving them all?
The General Assembly didn't ask us to provide that costing, because when they were considering moving to $13 and $15 an hour, they said, they went to all the school districts and said, what will it cost to move your employees up to 13 and 15?
So we still have an unknown amount then, unless you've gone ahead and figured out how many of our employees were already at $13?
So you'll see, I've got to...
The next slide demonstrates that data, right Andrew?
Yeah, it does, yeah.
Okay.
So here, here's the actual dollar impact that you see. As I mentioned, just the state itself was 600,000, which I highlight here. Total was about 700,000. I estimate for the $13 minimum wage, we got about 300,000. Of that 500,000 was for the minimum wage. Again, I asked DPI to provide me a breakdown, they said they couldn't do it. They put all the numbers into this formula and it created how much we got. So with that said, just for the $13 per hour, we got funded at 300,000. It costs 700,000 in total. So we need additional $400,000 to cover what is required, the minimum of $13 per hour. What you see here is what Dr. Locklear mentioned. For those employees, when we moved employees to the classified scale in July, most everybody got well over 2.5%. So, I'm trying to think of the word. So we met the minimum requirements of the state budget by moving to the classified scale and giving those employees more than the 2.5%. However, state came back, said $13 per hour, minimum wage. And we feel it's appropriate for those employees who are getting additional monies now moving up to $13 an hour, to also pay those who are over $13 per hour on the scale, additional 2.5%. And that's our recommendation that, here in column B. So you look at $13 per hour, increase 2.5%. That total cost is about a million dollars. We got 300,000 from the state, which would require additional $700,000 commitment from the board to cover that additional 2.5% for those employees over $13 per hour. And that is the item that we'll bring back to the board on Monday to discuss further.
I'd like to make a comment that the state funding for teachers is by allotment. That's for, but the classified, I mean, when you look at the schedules, we just get money to cover all our classifieds. The state doesn't say you need so many for this, so many for that, so many for the other.
That's correct.
It's entirely different way of funding.
And so many of those are funded in a specific category that it can only be spent on those classifieds. For example, teacher assistants, instructional assistants. We get a pot for those. It can't be transferred out, and so it's got to be spent on those teacher assistants. Just as an example.
That's not based on a specific number of teacher assistants.
Correct, correct.
Mr. Cox, and you may not have this information readily at hand, but do most other school systems have their classified staff on a salary schedule? Or do they do more like blanket across the board, everybody's getting $12 an hour?
I'm not 100% sure. I think it varies from district to district. The previous district I was in, we did have a scale. But I know other districts don't have scales. I don't know what percentage do and what percentage don't.
I just, I mean, I am very impressed with our scale and the fact that we have our classified folks able to move ahead over the years. But obviously, the state didn't take much of that into consideration when they did their figuring.
That's correct. You know, and I mentioned compression, you know, it doesn't address compression. And we'll talk about what compression is, but just showing you the cost of that. Additional $1.3 million if we were to decompress the scale, meaning the first step starts at $13 an hour and every grade incrementally moves up. And I've got a slide here to kind of show you what that looks like. So, and this is just through grade 57 on our classified scale. Where we implemented in July is this column. So the minimum wage that we had for grade 50, which was our lowest grade, was $11.66. As you see here, as you see here, it incrementally increased up to $1,274 at our grade 57. Well, when the state put in the $13 minimum wage, now, on our scale, we have grade 50 to grade 57 all at $13 per hour now. So all these classifications are making the same thing where previously there was some incremental growth from grade to grade. If we were to decompress the scale and started that minimum at $13 per hour, you see here are the estimates of what it would be growing. That's that additional $1.3 million cost to be able to do that.
And that would be decompressing it when our current structure, our current scale, going to, the current structure we use for our scale, it would cost that much to have that incremental spacing between each grade.
And I'll caveat here, which we'll talk about, this is at the $13 next year in the budget. The minimum goes to $15. So it makes it even more challenging, and you'll see the numbers on that here in a few minutes. But this kind of just gives you an idea of what the compression effect is on our current classified salaries.
You'll go back to that previous slide, Andrew, just a summary point. And when we discussed this with the Board Budget Committee, it was the thought that, you know, they wanted us to bring that forward to you on Monday for the recommendation to go with option B. Because of, you know, this late passage of the state budget several months after the classified salary schedule had been implemented, there is, you know, a reasonable expectation of our employees that they're looking at that 2.5%. So it is our recommendation for that, and we'll be bringing that to you on Monday. Just wanted to kind of sum that up a little bit. Thank you, Andrew.
Mr. Cox, this was not retroactive, was it? Or was this a retroactive raise?
Yes.
July, so we're going to...
And we're working, we have until March to get that paid. Our intent was to pay the retro for everybody. In January, our financial software vendor couldn't provide us the utility and time to do that. We have the utility now. There's some issues with that, but we're going to try to get it paid in the February payroll, although the law allows us till March to get it paid.
So we paid some in January or no?
So what we paid in January, we moved everybody up to the correct scale now.
Okay, okay.
To their new rate, based on what the state law is. And we paid all the bonuses that the state requires to pay by January 31.
Gotcha.
And now, the last piece of that is making everybody hold back to July at those new rates.
Gotcha.
Let me publicly say kudos to the payroll staff.
Absolutely, absolutely.
There's a huge lift to put all this together accurately for thousands of employees and really appreciate their hard work, really do.
And I know, I mean, this was like a last minute type thing, you know? We got our information and then our payroll, Mr. Cox had to get through to make sure that it hit with January payroll. So absolutely kudos.
We're waiting into mid, late December before we had guidance from the state.
Yes, correct. I mean, we didn't get some of the frequently asked questions documents from DPI until January. You know, expecting us to pay by the end of January. So absolutely, Dr. Locklear, the payroll team did an outstanding job to get out what they got out to our employees, and I hope that they appreciate that.
And is it clear to our employees that the retro will be forthcoming?
We sent out a communication, letting them know, you know, we had originally stated our goal was January, but we didn't have the utility to be able to do it. So now, we're working to have that done in February.
Okay.
All right, so let's talk a little bit about the cliff and the impact of the state budget, the late passage of state budget on the funding cliff. This is a slide that you've seen before. There's no change at all on this slide. It just shows that we've got some ESER revenue, ESER 1 revenue here, ESER 2 and ESER 3 revenue here, total up to 4.2 million. And then assigning fund balance, so we had about $6.2 million to cover expenses. And now, what you see here is moved about a million dollars of staff, and I'll talk about which staff that is, to our ESER, about a million dollars. Fiscal year '21, fiscal year '22, that same cost comes down here. And then we had unfunded fixed costs. I still show here 2 million, which is really 2.1 million. So now, our revenues are down about 2.2 million. And so for fiscal year '23, we bring these million dollars down, the unfunded fixed cost. And then, what are the anticipated fixed costs for fiscal year '23? And this looks at, the county provides us no additional funding. Now, we hope when we go to the county, they are receptive and do provide some additional revenue for us. But this looks at no additional revenue. So we're in the hole, almost $2 million without any additional revenue for fiscal year '23, based on this projection. Now, let's talk a little bit about the potential for the increased cost for the salaries, the $13 per hour and moving up 2.5%. Now, what I've done here is I've said, okay, we're going to assign 700,000 of additional fund balance. So that gives us a little more revenue, but you've got that same cost, $700,000 down here, which will carry over into the next year. And so now, we're looking at being in the hole by $2.6 million without any additional sources of revenue.
And that is for '22, '23?
That's for the '22, '23, fiscal year '23.
Which is the upcoming budget, this is what we're...
Correct, yeah.
And so, Mr. Cox, so your point of a previous slide that currently, I want everybody to understand where we are. We have 2 million in fund balance, right? That's what we want to maintain in fund balance, right?
For cash flow, deferred cash flows.
Cash flow, okay. And so, right out of the gate, as we head to try to finalize our budget, we're looking at that red bottom line of 2.6 million.
Yes.
Okay, so I just want, I want that to sink a little bit because we just don't have it. And so, just making sure that as we go to the commissioners, we want to make it clear that they understand what we're up against with our dollars and what we're trying to accomplish within our school system, so.
Well, so in other words, if we didn't get a minimum of this $2.6 million, we would have to cut services. Am I correct?
Correct, yes, sir.
All right, and that is the message that is going to be taken to the commissioners, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, but that's, I mean, we, you know, we can talk around it all we want, but the clear message is that we can't even begin to tackle the things we need to tackle, which is including raising our rates of reading and grade level performance. In fact, we would have to cut services if we don't get a minimum of this. And wait a second, you haven't even dealt with the inflation, am I correct?
In general, correct. You see down here, unanticipated unfunded fixed costs? And you'll see kind of a breakdown of what that is. And some of it has inflation, some of it doesn't. It's got utility costs.
See, this is, I am kind of concerned about that. We're expecting inflation, well, I mean, the numbers on inflation for maintenance are double digits, okay? But overall, if we just look at the Consumer Price Index, which is not really a clear fit, but it's close enough. We look at the Consumer Price Index, we're looking at about a 7.9% inflation for last year. We're looking at about the same for this year. So it just seems to me that if we have to, if we have to get, if we have to pay $500 to an actuary to give us an inflationary projection, or we have to go to one of our friends over at Investment House, which we have plenty in this area, and can give us an inflation prediction, that needs to go into the budget. Because if it doesn't, we're going to run short next year. And as I said, the county is already getting in an inflationary kicker because as housing prices go up, they keep the per mil rate the same. And so they're going to get more money. So it's important to me, at least.
We certainly will continue to do some more research and look at, when we bring back the superintendent's proposed budget, we'll certainly look at some other areas we can include inflationary increases into those fixed costs.
And you know, Mr. Levy's point, that's the feedback we're looking for.
Exactly, this is the exact feedback we're looking for as we finalize our preparations and present the budget in March. And there's definitely some data we can look at to bring back to the board in that presentation.
And to Mr. Levy's point, he threw out a number of 7.9, but it could be higher. So trying to come up with, as he stated, to exactly what is that number?
Right.
So that we have, okay.
Mr. Cox, I need some information. When we make our school purchases, whether it's for copy paper or toilet paper, we're paying sales tax, correct?
Yes.
And then, we provide that information to the county and they apply for the refund?
So when we purchase items and pay sales tax on it, we apply for a sales tax refund, and we get the county portion of that sales tax back at a, it's typically the next fiscal year when we get it back. When we get it back, but we don't get the state portion back.
That's like one penny, one penny or something that we get back from the.
Two, uh, I wanna say it's two and a half percent. I, I'm not exactly sure. It's two something, I believe, that we get back.
But we will, we'll be paying more in sales tax regardless next year as well.
Correct, correct, yeah.
But the community college doesn't have to pay sale tax, sales tax? Is that right?
Now, that, um, yeah, I'm not sure about that.
Or charter schools, do they pay sales tax?
I, I don't think they're exempt from it.
I have no idea.
I don't think they're exempt from it, just like we aren't. Okay. But we can apply, we do apply, um, for sales tax refund, for the county portion of the sales tax that we pay. We don't get the state back, but we get, uh, the county portion back.
And I believe that's been a legislative advocacy point in the past, and there hasn't been any movement with that.
Yeah. All right, so now, just, just talk a little bit about the staff, uh, here, um, that were paid, uh, under ESER one. Um, we, we anticipated, uh, state funding being cut the first year of, uh, the pandemic where we got these resources. So, we shifted, uh, some employees over to that ESER funding to make sure we're able to maintain the same level of services. And that included nine teachers, two assistant principals, um, and two nurses, uh, that we cover with, with that ESER funding. And again, I just mentioned, we, we originally moved them because there was no county funding and we anticipated a reduction, uh, in state funding, uh, due to COVID. So, now, we talked a little bit about, uh, the impact of the fiscal year twenty two budget, um, on.
Let me ask this one question on the two nurses real quickly. Uh, why couldn't we have, or did we move them over to the special nurse funding that we were getting, uh, for, from, um, uh, that we just recently got?
That, that is specifically for COVID testing?
No, I, I understand, but they can do that plus everything else as well, because, just, just a thought.
Yeah, that grant was to expand, was to expand, uh, not to, to plant, I guess you'd say, our current level. So, that's, so, uh, the, the nurses we, we hired with, I think it was one point four million dollar grant,
Correct, yeah.
which we, we've been working through, is was to expand that specifically for COVID testing. And then, once they took care of that piece, they can help out with other services. So, that's, that's how, uh, how that was administered.
Okay.
So, now, let's talk about, a little bit about the fiscal year twenty three budgeting process and what we have gone through, uh, to begin the work on, uh, putting together a budget. So, we met with budget managers in September. We, we reviewed zero-based budgeting guidelines. Um, the man, we asked the managers to submit three, uh, zero-based budgets by October fifteenth. One was a reduction budget, one was a, uh, as-is or continuation, uh, budget, and one was a ten percent expansion budget. We reviewed those budgets, and in looking at them, really, the only, uh, theme that came up was we would have to eliminate programs and services, um, in order to reduce the budget, which would denigrate our services to our students, staff, and our community, uh, by doing that. So, the, the overarching theme after we looked at these is, the primary focus is to cover our fixed cost increase, and as Dr. Locklear mentioned, you know, which is taking care of our people. We're not looking to expand programs or services. The bottom line is we're looking to take care of our people, to maintain, um, the services, um, and staff that we currently have. Um, at this point, I'll turn it over to Dr. Locklear, just to cover this slide, which is an example of how the principals, um, have to, uh, manage their resources that we give them.
There were some questions that came out in the budget committee around, you know, how do our, our school administrators, what ownership do they have in this process of managing the budget, uh, and being part of how we build the budget? Uh, and this is one example that we thought might be, uh, a little information to share with the board around that. And that's the example of the school staffing process. And it's really about, uh, the major resources our school principals get is their people, their number of staff. And so, each year, we have a process that projects how many staff they'll have in their building. And then, we work that process with them throughout, starting now, throughout the summer into the beginning of the school year. That really starts, as Andrew mentioned earlier, about the projection, how many projected number of students we believe each school is gonna have. Uh, and then taking that through, also monitoring even any student transfers that happen from school to school as part of our open transfer winter that happens this month in February. We then able to then push out after that is finalized, uh, a revised projection in, to, and of school allotments to our principals. And then, they begin to look at their staffing plans. And they may have been, uh, they may be projected to grow three more teachers next year, or they may be projected to decrease three teachers into the next year, based on the number of students they have in their building. And so, they begin to prepare schedules and staffing plans around that, and then they monitor it throughout the summer. How many students are actually documented in our school as we prepare for the next school year? Maybe we projected them to have two hundred kids, but as they're sitting there in July, they're only seeing a hundred and fifty. And so, we've gotta make some tweaks in our schedule. We've gotta think about our staffing. Because on day twenty of the new school year, our schools have to qualify for the number of staff they have in their school. And if they don't qualify for twenty teachers that we projected them to have, maybe they only qualify for eighteen. That means those two teachers are gonna be pulled back into the district to go to a school that may have qualified for two more teachers. And so, we're always trying to work within our resources and to make sure we're staying within that. We call that our reconciliation process when we open the school year. So, this is a, this one example of how we work the budget process to be as efficient and as effective as we can be within our resources, um, throughout the, throughout the summer going into the new year.
All right, so now, we'll get back into some, some additional factors that go into, uh, planning the budget and the costs. And we have local salary supplements, uh, for teachers' instructional support. Um, this has historically, historically been eight percent of their salary. Um, and the reason there is trying to compete against neighboring districts for the best teachers.
How does, how does that compare? I know this question is asked time and time again, but I think we need to be reminded of how that compares with our close neighboring counties. That would be Lee, um, uh, Richmond, Montgomery, and the like.
And I don't have it in front of me. We presented that back in December when we were talking about the retention bonuses. We listed out all the neighboring districts' salary supplements. Um, we were, we averaged about three thousand dollars, um, per, uh, um, teacher for supplement, somewhere around there, I believe is what it is. Um, and Lee, Chatham, and there was one other, I believe, that was significantly higher, and we were about the middle, um, maybe a little bit higher than some of the other neighbors, um, but we weren't significantly higher.
Would it be beneficial to just add that one slide next to this page for Monday?
Yeah, yes.
Just so that you can take a look at that.
Yeah, well, I think we all need to take a look at how we compete
Yeah.
with our neighboring, our, 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 our neighboring counties in the area, and that would, uh, actually also include Cumberland, uh, which I understand, which is obviously much larger, but, uh, and, 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 and a little different. But still, we do compete with Cumberland for teachers, you know, that's, that's the nature of where we live.
And I know we have a difference in that we're saying, uh, paying a percentage of salary, and so, many of the systems only pay a, like, a lump sum. You know, everybody gets a thousand dollars, or everybody gets fifteen hundred dollars.
Yeah, I can't say how the other districts pay. Some do pay a lump sum, and some do pay a percentage.
But we can, we can simply look at that and divide it into the average salary and figure out roughly where we are.
Yeah, and Andrew did that work when we talked about our, our, um, uh, recommendation on bonuses from ESER funds in December. And so, we had a slide that had that comparative analysis, so we can just bring that back to the board in March.
I'd appreciate that because.
So, that's, uh, the information you have.
That's, that's really important, I think, certainly to the public especially.
But we don't need to review the ESER bonuses, do, do you need that too?
No, 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 no.
You just want the regular supplements.
That was, uh, we, we decided that. That was done.
Yeah.
Uh, that was, that's, that's finished. Uh, I'm, I'm looking at, really what I'm looking at is retention and, uh, and, and, and keeping our teachers
Recruit them too.
happy, and, uh, if not well-paid, the teachers aren't well-paid.
Yeah.
Uh, at least pay them as much as we possibly can to keep them.
Uh, Cumberland's thirty-five hundred, Ashbur City's thirty-five hundred, Randolph's thirty-four hundred, Lee's forty-six hundred, Moore's thirty-eight hundred, Chatham is sixty-four hundred.
What's Hope?
Hope is twenty-six hundred. Hornets thirty-two hundred.
And where, once again, what?
Thirty-eight hundred.
Right, right around the middle somewhere, right?
Yes, sir, yeah.
And Chatham obviously is competing with Chapel Hill, Carver, yeah.
Correct, yeah, yeah. All right. And we also have an assistant principal, uh, supplement, again, competing against neighboring districts, and also to incentivize movement out of the classroom into school building administration. Um, we also have a principal, uh, local salary supplement, just like the others competing against, uh, the neighboring districts, trying to bring in the, the best talent, um, also incentivize movement into the principalship. Um, and then also, you know, another factor of that supplement is incentivized working in Title I schools, um, as part of that local supplement. So, with those supplements, moving everybody up a step, based on the state projected increase of two and a half percent for next year, we're looking at a cost of two hundred thousand dollars, uh, to move all the teachers' instructional support, assistant principals, and principals up on those scales. So, as we mentioned, the state has said there's gonna be a fifteen dollar minimum, uh, per hour wage, and then an additional two and a half percent increase, um, whichever is greater. So, what I've done here is I projected out the cost of, uh, average two and a half percent increase for our certified staff, our local only, is about three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. When we move our classified staff to fifteen dollars per hour, and those, um, who, uh, are over fifteen dollars per hour, give them two and a half percent increase, we're looking at additional cost of one point two million dollars next year for a minimum of almost one point six million dollars for certified and classified staff, um, and benefit rate increases. Then, and I'll caveat, the projection is based on the two and a half percent that is in the state budget, the two-year budget that was passed in November, and it's also using the benefit rate increases, um, that are in that budget. Now, as you'll see later, are they gonna stay? Are they gonna change? We don't know. Um, but that's what the budget is based on, um, there. And I also caveat, this is if the state fully funds us at fifteen dollar, um, per hour for our state-funded folks, and we don't have to cover, uh, some of them with our local dollars.
But the, but the decompressed budget is four point, four point three, no?
So, so that, I'm gonna get into that column now. So, if we were to decompress the salary sk, classified salary schedule, starting that grade fifty at fifteen dollars per hour, move grade fifty-one up to fifteen-ten as an example, and I don't know exactly what it would be, uh, grade fifty-two up to fifteen-twenty per hour, it would cost, uh, almost four million dollars to do that, for a total of almost four point four million dollars needed to decompress it, where every grade has a different salary rate. So, when we compress the scale here, and I don't have another slide on it, but when we compress at fifteen dollars per hour, our grade fifty employees to, I believe it's our grade sixty-two employees, every classification in there will now be making a minimum of fifteen dollars per hour. So, you've got your custodians, uh, your custodian one, your custodian two, your custodian three, all will be making fifteen dollars per hour now, um, in there, instead of having some separation between them.
Are they making, are, is any of them making more money than that?
Uh, I'd have to look.
Will they be having a decrease at all?
No, nobody's gonna take a decrease.
Okay, okay.
Everybody will get at least a minimum of fifteen dollars or two and a half percent increase.
I don't want anyone to go down.
Yeah, no, nobody's gonna go down. Nobody's gonna go down. But, but the big point is the compression, how much it costs to decompress the classified scale, the way it's currently implemented, and the integrity of, keeping the integrity of that scale that the consultants put together based on, uh, market analysis, um, and how they, uh, separated everybody, uh, it's four million dollar costs.
It's a rather daunting figure. I think we, I think we would all say we would rather keep it decompressed.
Absolutely, absolutely.
But what a huge amount of money.
Yeah.
Without more income from the state to, to make up the difference. Yeah, the state compressed teachers years ago. I don't know how long they, ago they started cramming teachers down into little bundles. And so, you see no increase for years.
Right.
Um, with the state. And, and we had done so well with our local employee, well, our classified employees, to get the, this opportunity to increase. And, and as much as we want them all to start at fifteen and go up, which I don't, I think we're all united in that.
Yeah.
Um, I hate to see them all smushed back down so that it's more difficult to move ahead.
And, and they still will, you know, get a step out for, you know, additional year of experience. But just, although grade fifty to believe is sixty-two, albeit the same rate now, under, under compression here. But, yeah, like me, like you say, it's four million dollars.
Right.
We don't have four million dollars, although we would love to decompress the scale. We don't have additional four million dollars just to do that.
Well, I, one of the things that I think we need to do is to present to the county commissioners all of this as an inflationary increase, because that's exactly what it is.
Yeah.
And the ta, and, and, and let's get the county commissioners on board with that, rather than saying, well, if we decompress or if we compress. I can imagine how our employees would be upset.
Yeah.
If, uh, uh, if somebody who's, um, been on the job for ten years is making the same or almost the same as a new hire. You know, that's not the way to keep employees.
And that's what, exactly.
Uh, and, 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 and all we're really doing is keeping what we have, currently, we have a decompressed, uh, salary scale, right?
Uh, not anymore. With the thirteen dollar per, we did, we implemented it in July. When the state went to the thirteen dollars per hour, as I showed you on a previous slide, grades fifty to grade fifty-seven are now compressed.
Okay, so as we sit here, we're now compressed.
At, on the thirteen dollars per hour, yes, sir.
So, so in terms of inflation, our employees have taken a cut. I mean, that's the way I, I look at, maybe, you know, I'm just too frank.
I mean, everybody got significant increases going to the thirteen dollars per hour and going to the classified scale.
With the two point five percent.
With, and with the additional two.
Everybody got an increase.
Everybody got increases. And when we moved to the classified scale, some of it were significant increases.
Right, well, I just.
But not an increase that keeps up with the cost of living.
That's exactly, that's exactly correct.
On a year-to-year basis, correct.
I mean, and it also doesn't keep up with the, with our, 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 our ability to retain staff by keeping them gradually increasing as the years go by, so that they wanna stay employed with us.
Right.
Because clearly, a bus driver who's been around for ten years is going to be, I would imagine, a better bus driver overall than some brand-new bus driver who we've gotten. A brand-new bus driver will be a good bus driver, but we need that, that experience. Same with teachers, other things like that.
Well, especially, and, and we've heard of this before, we're in competition with the county for the same kind of personnel,
Oh, absolutely.
uh, whether it's the county governmental jobs, and they're paying more.
By the way, that's a, that's a good question. Is the, did the county, uh, uh, does the county have a compressed or a decompressed scale? Is that, is that a fair question?
Well, the, the county has a five-step scale, or, uh, I believe it's five-step, where, and I don't know how many categories they have on there. Um, you know, we've got grade fifty to seventy-eight over thirty steps. Um, so, so there's as much, uh, condensed already. Um, so, I can't address if they had to do any compression or not, but it's only a five-step scale compared to a thirty-step that we have.
Right.
We've seen their sta, their figures before for what different employees were making at what grade levels.
Right, right.
And it was more. Um, and of course, we can train a bus driver, and then they can go over and drive, I don't know, what's the Moore County Transportation System bus called, that, that service, or they can go to Pinehurst and drive their shuttles, um, and make more money, and so.
Well, then that is, uh, then that is something that we need to, you know, when we go and present all this to the, to the county commissioners, and this is for the, the superintendent, because the superintendent is clearly going to lead that, uh, these are things that we have to look them in the eye and, uh, and, and, and tell them, you know? Um, uh, sometimes I think we get, uh, lost in saying, well, we just wanna keep what we have, and, uh, if they, you know, they're keep, give us. they're keep, give us that same seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for technology that they've given us for five or six years without any inflationary increase. Because we do have to maintain our services for our, for our students, you know, that's important.
Absolutely. I think we all see it, and I, and I know that it's been presented to our commissioners along those same lines every year. Uh, you know, just playing, it's, it's terrible to be trying to just play keeping up all the time, and we, we don't make that step ahead, but, um, I, I'm a hundred percent with you.
And we need to, maybe I'm, I'm stepping ahead by saying this, we need to look at the programs that we've talked about and go to them and say, let's step ahead. By the way, I noticed they're having a hearing, was it this week, on their ESER money?
Yeah, that's right.
And I don't know, is any of that county ESER money is coming to the schools? Uh, so, uh, it's, it's important to take a look at such programs as, uh, lowering class size in fourth and fifth grades, because I think that is something that all of us.
All of us.
Are, are unanimous on, we, we've always been unanimous on that. And, 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 and also, at least, this is dear to my heart, going after our reading scores, and, 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 and especially, especially the, the, the reading gap. And we've got to, the educational gap, and we've got to figure out a program that will address that, and will address it head-on.
But before we lay this, this slide, Mr. Cox, the fifteen dollars per hour, that is included in the state's recommendation that's forthcoming for next year, correct?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
So, so we're going to have to get to that point anyway, right?
So, so we're, so we're going to have to get to at least this?
Right.
Pam, that's more than a recommendation, that's law.
That, that is in law, correct.
So, so we don't have, that, that's what I want to make clear, you know, we don't have a choice. This is a recommendation from the state that we have to abide by. So I, I just, you know, I think it's important that, um, that the commissioners and, and as our public, they're reviewing our information, I just think it's clear, which, which it should be, fifteen dollars an hour, it should be, but we have no choice.
Correct, correct.
You know, we, we have to abide by what's coming down from our state.
And we, we have an actual example as far as the commissioners go. Our finance department lost a young lady a couple of years ago that went virtually the same job as commissioners for over ten thousand dollars a year.
Correct, yeah.
So we can show them actual examples of what happened.
Okay.
So some other, other salary factors, I'm going into fiscal year twenty-three budget. There's a local administration salary scale, which covers our classified directors, a classified assistant directors, certified directors, certified assistant directors, executive officers, and chief officer. And the cost to move up one step on that scale based on the state raise in the budget, and the adding in the new benefit rate increases is fifty thousand dollars. Another factor that goes into the budget, and I know we talk about it every year, is charter schools, the funding requirement where we have to give a per pupil share of what the county gives us to the charter schools for the students they have that reside in Moore County, and it's outlined in general statute here.
By the way, just one question on that, on your projections. Uh, they're losing a high school over at Stars, okay? My guess, even though they're supposed to do, lose the, the high school, I think twenty-four or something like that, my guess is that they're going to be losing students earlier than that. My question is, are we, are, are, are we projecting, or do we know whether our, our high school population is going to increase based on that?
So we don't know at this point what the impact will be. I mean, we know, we know they're closing, but we don't know, you know, are they going to stay and, and move out and finish out the high school like they're allowing them to do, or are they going to go ahead and leave and come back to us? We don't know that at this point. And we've looked, we've looked at a three-year average growth when we're projecting out. Actually, it's on a slide, I'll tell you what it is. What were, what the number, how we're projecting for next year for the charter schools.
Wouldn't you figure that even though they're closing their high school or, or slowing down over the next four years, they'll increase their K-eight enrollment, because they have classroom space?
We, we have, we have the same example with the kids for the private schools or the charter schools, K through eight, because those kids, you know, as far as the number that comes to high school, come to our high school.
And we can, I mean, we'll have conversations as it gets closer with the charter schools to get their best guess on the projections. I'm just a little early on that right now, so we've just kind of used a, a average, which I'll, it's on a slide here, and we'll talk about that. So just historical charter school students, you see the trend here. Back in two thousand twelve, thirteen, there was three hundred and forty-one total students. It has increased, so this year, we've been billed for twelve hundred and forty-four students in charter schools. Now caveat, this number here does not include our two-state approved virtual charters that's, we have some folks going to, because they're funded differently. Uh, the virtual charters, they'll all have a different funding model. So they're not, they're not included here, but there are about forty students that we have attend those two virtual charter schools. So when you look at the total Moore County population of charter schools and Moore County schools, you see the trend here slightly increasing. You see COVID here for Moore County schools, we took a decrease, we've come back up, charters have gradually grown as well. So we talked about having to give a per pupil amount to the charter schools. This is just the budget over each year. Um, Moore County schools has had to set aside to provide to charter schools. This year, we estimated just over three million dollars, based on the anticipated charter growth going to our charter schools. So what this is showing is the per pupil breakdown that we pay to the charter schools and the total expenditures. This slide was the budget, this slide is actual expenditures. This year, we're estimating a per pupil amount from the county at just over twenty-two hundred dollars. I'll just highlight, back in two thousand nineteen, twenty, we were at twenty-three hundred dollars. So we're almost a hundred dollars less per student from the county than we were two years ago there.
That's if there's no increase from the county, correct?
This is for twenty-one, twenty-two, this is not for twenty-two, twenty-three.
Current year, okay.
Correct.
Yeah.
So we did not have an increase from the county, so as you see, these two years, that funding decreased on a per pupil basis. I will go ahead.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
And, and, but once again, and I still want to talk statistically, uh, you know, it looks like we've gone down a hundred dollars, but in reality, you've got a hundred dollars plus seven percent. And I also think that as we present these projections to the county, because every, every, um, uh, organization and government does this, because we have a significant amount of cash that we, that we spend, if we have a decrease or an increase, we need to take inflation into account, so that it's, um, if seven percent is fourteen hundred dollars and two thousand dollars, where I play this mic, poor math, then we've actually gone down, it's, it's a hundred and forty dollars, two thousand dollars. Then we've actually gone down not a hundred dollars, but two hundred, two hundred, two hundred fifty dollars. So it's important to present that to the county commissioners and to Mr. Vest when we do our presentation. Um, I, 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 I can't stress that enough, but just for Mike, okay?
Mr. Cox may have my point that I'm getting ready to make coming up on a slide, but I, I just want to point out that when we present our budget to the commissioners, we have presented in the past to where we have a total dollar sum, okay, for Moore County schools, and then we have this set aside amount, the flow-through amount for the charter schools, okay? Because that money is not coming to Moore County schools. So, when, whenever we get our lump sum from the county, then our set aside gets included in the lump sum that we get, which causes an additional reduction, really, of what we need, because we don't get that money, it goes straight to the charter schools.
And you will see that in a slide coming up.
But, but my point is, is that that shouldn't even be factored in into the money that we request for Moore County schools. Now again, granted, we have to get it, and then we have to pay it out, but it doesn't come to us to be able to do anything with it for Moore County schools.
It's just, it's just a pass-through.
It's a pass-through.
But, but let me, let me say, let me say it this way.
Say it that way.
If it's, if it's thirty-two million dollars or if it's thirty-four million dollars, it, that's, when, when that gets into the county commissioner's mind, that's almost, that's, that's, that's just not meaningful. What is meaningful is that we need so much money as a continuation budget with inflation, or guess what, we're going to have to cut services. And I think, I, I, I'm not sure whether, uh, whether we looked the county commissioners in the eye at the last presentation and said, or we're going to have to cut services. And luckily, we got all the ESER funds, and the ESER funds, I, I think, covered up a lot of the shortfall that, that we've seen. Well, we're not getting the ESER funds, we're, I don't think we're going to have another pandemic.
No.
Okay, or at least not another giant amount of money coming down for the, for the administration of Washington. So we have to, because this is as much messaging to the county commissioners as it is messaging to the general public. And we have to say either this, or we will have to cut services. Uh, and, and, and that's an important message to, to give to them. Actually, I would say either this or we'll have to cut services, plus we do need this for, because I have asked and I will ask again, that we at least fund a new position for an IEP coordinator uh, who will coordinate all IEPs within the county, and that's maybe for another, for another session. But we, the, I, getting an IEP together is a tremendous burden on teachers and on principals. And too often, that's burdening them in addition to their other burdens, and also the poor kids who, who need the IEPs, the teachers are going to say, well, I don't, they're, in their own minds, they're saying, I really don't have time to, I, I know they're not doing this consciously, but I really don't have time to help this child, so we'll just put off this IEP till later. No, the, the teacher needs to be able to say, Mrs. Jones over in central office has, coordinates IEPs, and this child needs an IEP, so here's a memo to Ms. Jones in the central office, we need an IEP, please coordinate.
Bob, if we can wait for another day, let's do this. We're going off track, you're getting off track.
Well, the, the kids with the IEPs need it.
Yeah, that's another day, another dollar.
To go back then one moment to the charter schools, and, and I just wanted to make this point again, is that I don't know how many years in a row we've advocated for the county to fund the county schools, and then to set aside funding for the charter schools, but they've been unwilling to talk about that as we have presented year after year. But again, I, like Mr. Levy just said, we get thirty-two thousand or whatever, but we really don't get thirty-two thousand, because immediately, two point, whatever it's going to be, two point six has been channeled right off, so we're actually getting twenty-nine point one or, or something, and my math is not as good as yours, Bob.
Yeah, and I got that on a slide here in just a minute.
Okay.
You know, if, if we could just get them to take hold of that idea, it would help us with our planning so much more. And then everybody gets funded.
One thing I want to caveat about charter schools, as I show here, we, just over three million budgeted, based on the numbers that have come in, it looks like we're going to be a little bit under that, about two point eight five million, if the charter numbers hold true, so it'll be a little, about a hundred and a hundred fifty thousand under budget for our charter school commitment for this year.
But, but let me, let me also say, don't get too hung up on that this money goes to charter schools. It's a cost, it's an overall cost. So we get thirty-two million, okay? We need thirty-four, thirty-six million, whatever, to keep up, whether it goes to charter schools or whether it doesn't go to charter schools. So, you know, it's, 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 it's an accounting thing, but we need to get more, and, and they don't, and the county commissioners don't really fathom whether thirty-two million or thirty-four million is the right number or, or, or how it's paid, we just have overall costs. And we need more, because inflation is, 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 is attacking us.
And this chart kind of summarizes the point that you guys have been making. We were, here's the amount of county funding we received, the total amount of county funding we received, excluding digital learning and capital outlay funds. And you see here, thirty-one million in nineteen twenty, two point two went to charter schools, Moore County schools almost had twenty-nine million for operations, with almost the same level of students that we do now, for twenty-one, twenty-two, where we got thirty million, three hundred and fifty thousand, but we got one point five million less, because more went to the charter schools. So it just shows the point that you guys were making there, in actual real numbers. So that's what it means for the charter school flow-through.
So to your point, inflation has, has not been built in to those numbers in the last several years.
It's just one of, it's.
From the county, yeah.
Charter schools, I, I don't get hung up on charter schools, because it's just another one of our fixed costs.
Yeah.
Okay?
Right.
And whether we allocate it here or we allocate it there.
Yeah.
Doesn't matter, we're going to have to pay it. So we need to look at our overall amount of money we need with the charter schools.
Right, and, and that's why, you know, we, we bring up the charter schools here, because it is a fixed cost increase. It's a factor that goes into the budget, showing that, hey, you know, they're increasing, this amount is going to go to them, you know, for us to maintain, this is what we need in order to be at a, continue the same level of services. So it is a fixed cost, and that's why it's in, in the budget here.
Right.
Or, or the budget discussion here, to your point, Mr. Levy. So what this shows, over five-year, uh, excuse me. Five-year growth average is about sixteen percent for our charter schools, which would be a hundred and ninety-seven students. This year, the growth was about sixty-eight students, which was an anomaly compared to the prior years. Um, so a modest projection for fiscal year twenty-three right now, as I said, we can have conversations with the charter schools as it gets a little bit later, and they shore up better their projections. Right now, we're anticipating or projecting a hundred and fifty new students in the charter schools, which would be a cost of about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. You see, well, wait a minute, it says two hundred thousand dollars here. Well, on a previous slide, we're about a hundred and a hundred fifty thousand under budget for charters this year, because we didn't, they didn't grow at the level we expected. So that will offset this amount here going forward for the charter cost. So at this point, we've kind of broken it in segments, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Lockley.
Well, I just wanted to see if at this point there's any questions for discussion before we launch into what we know for fiscal year twenty-three, what we don't know for fiscal year twenty-three, and then what additional input, questions, information, or consensus that the board might have on where we go from here while we do our final preparations. So I just wanted to pause here, see if there's any, any additional, I think we've had discussion along the way.
Yeah.
Had some pretty clear, seems like some pretty, some, some overall consensus on some points as we've moved through this. So I don't, I don't know if there's any additional questions at this point as well.
Board members, do you have any questions? So let's take a five-minute, um, break to give Mr. Cox and, uh, time to catch his breath and others take a break.
And then on April eleventh, the Moore County's Board of, Moore County Schools Board of Education will adopt their budget at the April eleventh session. And then on April nineteenth, we will present the Moore County Schools budget to the county commissioners at their meeting that evening at five thirty. And this is information that the county has provided to us where they've asked us to present on that, that night, April nineteenth.
Mr. Cox, remind us that at the March ninth, county commissioner budget war session, is that a preliminary? I know it's preliminary for them, but does, does our numbers, their projection on what they feel like they're going to allot for us? Is that included in that presentation?
So, three years ago, they included their estimate or forecast for the county, or for the public schools. The last two years, they have not discussed the public schools or their estimates at all during their county work session, county budget work session.
Okay, so, so basically, as we go forward to, present our information to the commissioners on April the nineteenth, we are presenting what we feel our need is at that point in time, okay? We have not been given any kind of indication from the commissioners as to what they feel our allotment will be for the school system. So, we are shooting in the dark, so to speak, as far as, we're going with what our needs are, basically at that point in time. And we're pinning it at the commissioners, we're giving them everything we are needing, and then it will be up to them to review and to determine what comes back to us. I just, I just wanted to point out that, that timeline so that everybody's clear on the information, when it will be presented, and what the expectations are going forward.
That's correct, yes. And one thing, one additional thing that we know right now are fixed costs, increased estimates. They are estimates, we'll take the feedback from the board today, potentially revise those estimates. But overarching theme is trying to take care of our people, to maintain the level of staffing and services that we're able to provide to the students and the community of Moore County.
And I would just add to Ms. Thompson, Chair Thompson's point, that certainly we're gonna engage with Mr. Vess and, and his team in any way we can engage with them throughout the process before, before we present to them, we certainly want to do that. We want to get hopefully as much information from them and, and share our information and any, any information they want to help understand where we are and what fixed, fixed costs are doing to us, and as Mr. Levy says, inflation is doing to us in our, in our budget and what we have to provide for our reduced services. We certainly want to have that, that act of communication with them, that community and information exchange. So certainly I look forward to, to helping with that and working with Mr. Vess, so just wanted to add that.
So, to kind of summarize this, made a fixed cost that we talked about in pieces in the previous section. Certified staff, local supplement step, which your teachers and structural support, assistant principals and principals, the cost of two hundred thousand dollars, administrative staff salary increase to match the state increase, fifty thousand dollars. Your locally paid certified salary pay increase of average two and a half percent. This is your, your teachers primarily, locally paid teachers, three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. And then your local classified salary pay increase, the minimum of fifteen dollars per hour or two and a half percent, whichever is greater, to match the state increase for our locally paid employees, which is one point two million dollars. Charter school flow through, and it depends on what the county funding level is, but if they hold us level, we about two hundred thousand dollars and using that we have left over from this year for being over budget. And then we've looked at utility rate increases, the cost for additional utility, about a hundred thousand dollars. So you're looking at just over two point one million dollars in fixed costs for next year, prior to including additional inflation, and we'll take that under advisement, Mr. Levy. So these are our initial estimated fixed cost increase for fiscal year twenty-three. So that, that's things that we, we know or we're estimating right now. Here are some things that we don't know that could impact this. You know, will there be change to state raises? It is a two-year budget, in the short session, they have historically come back and made changes. The last few years, they haven't had a budget, so they haven't done it, but prior to that, they did come back and make some changes. So, will our costs change? Will they increase state raises? Will they change the benefit rate amounts that they have in the current budget? What is the state funding level be, gonna be, are there gonna be cuts? Are they gonna fully fund that fifteen dollar per hour minimum wage? So we don't have to use any local dollars to cover that. Doubtful, but you know, there's always talk about additional COVID, federal COVID money coming out, that's something we don't know. And if it is, it'll be one-time money that will be short-lived, but it will be utilized appropriately if we do get some additional funding. And then here's the big key, you know, what's the county funding amount gonna be? You know, what, what is the county gonna do for us this year? Do we have level funding, or we can get a modest increase? Are they gonna fund us where we need to be to be able to maintain our services? Our projections for students, for DPI, they, they give us a projection where we're funded on. Moore County's Schools does their projection. You know, we don't know exactly what it's gonna be. You see, you know, I mentioned that Dr. Metcalf and Ms. Fall have done some early projections and think we'll be about where we were this year, but we don't know that for certain. So they're just estimates at this point. Are there gonna be other district staffing needs? You know, is Connect Academy gonna be a standalone school at some point? Are we gonna need, you know, counselors, some office support for, for that? Crane's Creek is going, growing, are we gonna need additional counselor there to be able to serve the students there? And then, you know, we don't know what our charter school enrollment numbers are. We did a five-year projection on that right now, but again, those are estimates. So these are things that we don't really know for certain at this point that could factor into changing the numbers that we presented so far.
I'd just add to, to that, Andrew, when talking about other district staffing needs, we're talking about the Connect Academy. Staff right now is doing a full analysis of where we are with our Connect Academy, including surveying interests for next year, confirming with the DPI and legalities. We have a school number for it, so we're confirming that that could be activated, and we're confirming what the costing would be with that. We want to bring a full analysis to the board when we bring a recommendation to you and, and provide a full analysis of where we are, what we recommend, and where we'll be going from there. Certainly there is demand for it, and there's been demand this year and it's served the need for our community. We anticipate that might be the same way, but we also got to do that full analysis. What's been the act, some of the academic growth within it? What's, what's the cost that it will impact, that will have on us? These are two positions that we know we would need if we had Connect Academy next year, a counselor to serve the need of those students, and one office support position. Keeping in mind, our Connect Academy this year is one of our larger schools. You know, it's, it was as large as six hundred in the fall, roughly five hundred here in the spring. And so there are certainly administrative needs that, that you have there. The state would provide a principal if it was a standalone school, so that would be provided by the state. Crane's Creek has grown this year, and certainly we want to make sure we're providing for their needs appropriately. So that's where the, both of those come from.
I, I would like to see us really move forward with our Connect Academy. I just think that that has served our, our students and parents well, and, and our community. And as Dr. Lockler said, it, it, there's a need. So whatever budget dollars that we need for that, I would like to see us add it to our budget for this year so that we have what we need so that, to maintain that particular school. Because that's what it is, I mean, we've, we've developed a separate school and, and I think going forward, we need to maintain that. So, I, I think, but our members will agree and that, that's something that we need and to, just let's go ahead and designate dollars so our board members can take a look at what those dollars are and, and then they obviously can come in and voice their opinions. But it appears that we are gaining from some of our students that may be homeschooled, that's been pulled in, that they have an opportunity to use the Connect Academy, and that's just growing our school population. So I, I just think going forward, that that's something we need to take a look at.
And let me also say that, once again, I want to put another plug, sorry Stacy, for an IEP coordinator. And I also would hope to cost out the cost of additional teachers in third, excuse me, in fourth and fifth grade, fourth and fifth grades. Because the students are going from, was it fifteen, seventeen to thirty? When they go in the fourth and fifth grades. And some of them who are not reading grade level, they're, they're supposed to be retained in the third grade, but we pass them on, and they need remedial reading help in the fourth and fifth grades so they can, so they can be on that grade level standard. So I think we need to move ahead and, 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 and request the money.
And that would be, you know, one of those priorities and what Andrew and I said this morning, that would be one of those priorities if the board wanted to reach, you know, take action on, to say we want this included. This would be, that would end up being an expansion item. I know Mike and Kate has done some initial work, Dr. Metcalf and Ms. Fall have done some initial work on, on what, how many teachers we need to go back to, you know, our, our ratios of where we were pre-K three class size, which were, if I'm not mistaken, Mike, were one to twenty-four. And just in fourth and fifth grade, how many teachers, just, just an estimate, because we're still working with preliminary numbers, but we need twenty-six teachers.
Yeah, that's under two million dollars.
Okay, okay.
Well, I might, I might add that we just gave away two million dollars in a, in a bonus. And I'm not saying that, you know, I don't begrudge anyone their bonus, but if we could take two point six million dollars in lower class size and hopefully with the goal of raising, uh, uh, grade level performance, because that's the bottom line, that's what we're here for, is to raise grade level performance. All of our buildings and everything we have, if we don't accomplish that, then, you know, we're not doing what the taxpayers want us to do. So actually, looking at some of the numbers that I've seen here, two point six million dollars is not a lot of money in the whole scheme of things. It's a lot of money, don't get me wrong, and it's taxpayers' money. But I think it's well spent, and we're spending a lot more than that on a lot of other things.
Well, one thing we have to remember, and I am one hundred percent behind you for adding additional teachers in fourth and fifth grade. I, I, obviously, we all see the need to try and bring those class sizes back to something manageable, but those bonuses were one-time bonuses paid out of one-time funds, correct?
Correct.
And we can't count on adding teachers with one-time funds. So what we really must do is push for additional funds that are on a recurring basis in order to make teacher additions happen.
Oh, and I, I don't doubt, I don't really understand that.
And, and that doesn't happen on a continuation budget, but it, I definitely feel like it has to be a priority of the board for what we do.
If we don't go to the county commissioners, if we just say, oh, we want to do what we've been doing, and we're, we're happy with, with our current grade level performance, that's not what the public wants. The public wants us to, the public doesn't mind funding our schools, but they want to see tangible results from those, from those funds. And by giving them lower student-teacher ratios, we're giving them tangible results from those funds. And so I think the public will support us on that, and I think that that will push the county commissioners to support us on it.
We certainly can do some, some more fine, sorry, Mr. Jensen, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I have two questions and then a few comments. How many, how many classroom teachers are presently being paid with local funds? And I know you can't be exact, but approximately, classroom teachers. Or you can let us know later.
Give me a minute on that, yeah.
Okay, second question is, when will this presentation be online so that we can all see it?
Today.
Today?
Yes, sir.
After the meeting.
And may I ask too, if, when we have a meeting like this before, if it's not online when we have the meeting, if we could get copies, that the rest of the board members should get copies also.
Yes, sir.
Now, I have some comments on the, on the commissioner's budget. We need, as, as a lot of people said, we need to get the message across to them of, of what our budget really means, and if we don't get the funding, what is it gonna do? So I have recommended before, and I suggest again, when we present the county budget to the commissioners, that we exclude the, for the first part of it, exclude what, what the charter schools cost, you know, what we're having to pay out to them. Put on there what we plan to do for our students alone. And then add the charter schools onto it. Say, if we don't, this is what we plan for our students. So if we don't get the anticipated money we'll need for charter schools in addition to this, every dollar we don't get that we anticipate for charter schools, it means we're gonna have to cut services for what we have planned for our students. And then they need to know, if they don't give us the money we need, then they need to know what services were cut, and the public needs to know what services and resources we had to reduce because we didn't get the money to do it. And as far, and for years, I've been on for the economically disadvantaged students and their performance. And if we keep having budgets like this where we're not doing anything additional for them, we're doing the best we can for them with what we have, but if we never get an increase in budget, we're never gonna improve that. And I think we need to, the worst groups, we need to focus on our lower performing schools. And there are lots of things we can do, we can have more teachers age, we can have lower class sizes, but we can't do any of that, so if we don't get additional money. So if we don't get additional money, I don't want to hear people screaming about our performance if they're not screaming to the commissioners and the state about giving us additional money to do it, because it's not gonna happen. If you do the same thing every year, you're gonna get the same results. We're improving, but not nearly as fast as we need to, and we know we could if we had the resources we needed to do it. That's it, thanks.
Mr. Jensen, we've got eighty-five locally paid teachers.
Are they all classroom teachers?
Uh, yes.
Okay. So I want, I want to use that for the legislative agenda to show what their allocations they have for the, the three different sections of. And I figured out if we, if they just reduce that one, one student for each of those three categories, that that would go to fifteen more teachers anyway.
I think we have, what, two AP that are on local?
That are on local, assistant principals?
Yeah.
We have approximately fifteen, seventeen assistant principals on local funding. The state only funds you one assistant principal for basically a thousand kids.
So we have fifteen with that, and then what about classified staff? We have a, um...
Classified staff, Stacy, they, they just give us a certain amount of money, they don't care how many we have. We have to, we have to ju- adjust that if I'm correct, adjust that with the, with the funding we get. It's crazy, absolutely crazy.
So it appears that, to the question on this slide of where do we go, is that we want to go with a budget that is expanded to cover our fixed costs as well as our additional priorities. That, that's the direction that we want to go.
I, I would agree.
And we've already heard a couple of things with regard to extra teachers, the position that Bob has alluded to, as well as our academy. And we feel like those are, are priority items that, that we want to take a look at and have a line item for those within our budget going forward, just to see what those dollars are, obviously as well as our inflation increase that, that we have talked about. Board members, are there any other?
I, I would say, in, so they're not doing all this work, but we probably need to vote on certain things too. So I mean, I don't want you guys to put in a position that some of us don't agree with that's gonna, you know, take a lot of, a lot of time and effort to put in a position that we may not agree with and then they just don't do work.
So to your point, do we want to just get a consensus? Obviously, we, we, we can't vote, but we can get a consensus today for the priorities. If, if everybody's in agreement with, okay, we could start with our academy. Is everybody in agreement with that, proceeding forward with that? Okay, what about our teachers? Extra teachers that we need to begin to work on reduction of our class sizes?
Yes.
Well, I, I would go with the lower performing schools first, before I do class sizes for everybody. If we had class size problems in the lower performing schools.
I think like Bob has said, we, we'd love to see it hit the fourth and fifth grades first, such, because those are the classes that, it's, it's gotta be a shock to go from one to twenty to one to thirty-eight or whatever. I don't think we have any that big. So I think, I think we all agree that we want to see those lower sizes, lower grades across the board.
But we want to see them in the lower performing schools first. We've gotta do something extra for lower performing schools, we're never gonna increase it.
To, to your point, I think, which is an excellent point.
Yeah.
If we, let's say, get one million dollars instead of two million dollars,
Yeah.
then we're gonna, we, we would certainly want that to go to our lower performing students so that we can give them that boost up that they need, and, and, and we can reduce the gap. But when we go to the county commissioners, let's go for the gold and tell them, well, we want it for, for everybody,
Yeah.
not just the underperforming students, and let's see what we get.
Well, because, you know, keep in mind, those, those lower performing schools, especially the three restart schools have flexibility in their funding, correct?
Currently do, yeah.
In the use of their funding.
They don't get a lot more money.
Well, they don't get a whole lot more money, but they can target it into different ways, so we, I'm with Bob. Let's, let's ask for it across the board and see what happens.
And then the last item was the IEP position to try to facilitate that need across the, the district, just to help our teachers with that particular student need, okay?
I'd like to hear what Dr. Lockler has to say on that.
That's right.
Madam Chair, I would, yeah.
And Dr. Metcalf.
I would say that with the IEP position, that's something we'd want to do a little more exploration with.
Okay.
We'd want to have Dr. Bullard's team, possibly a principal or two, involved in discussing that and giving some information to the board. I would say that, you know, we have EC teachers, exceptional children's teachers in our schools. Part of their responsibility are developing those IEPs. There's federal guidelines and laws and rules and state guidelines and rules around how that works. So there's some complexity that we'd want to educate the board around, and it may be one position wouldn't be enough. We'd need six if we wanted to have a position like that for twenty-two schools and thirteen thousand students. So that, that's something that may have just a little more complexity. I think it'd be benefit the board if we would educate some more before we might direct one position that may not actually do what we want it to do.
Okay.
I agree.
But, but let me, let me also, let me also say that I, what I, I would envision is not six different positions, but one position, and you may need several support personnel, I, 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 I don't know. But the whole idea is that, you know, I believe that we have, without getting into anything confidential, we've gotten some very, very bad feedback on some of our IEPs and our, and, and our ability to keep up with the, with the, with the time requirements. Am I, am I correct on that, Dr. Lockler?
There's, there's, I don't know the specific situation you're speaking of, but there are times where there's gonna be disagreements from parents and from what's being provided to their student. There may be a time that there's, there's something that, that wasn't followed appropriately according to the IEP, but more times than not, we're able to...
I'm actually talking about setting up the IEP and setting up, setting up all the testing and the meetings.
Correct, there's a ninety-day timeline to get that.
Right, there's a ninety-day timeline, and I understand in, that we haven't always been meeting that. Let me, if I could talk in generalities. So the bottom line is that we need to have someone who is accountable, and we also need to relieve our, our, we'll call them our frontline teachers from that responsibility of having to coordinate all the testing in an IEP meeting, which has, which puts about five people in a room or on one Zoom call, which is just absolutely difficult.
The EC teacher does all that, not the classified teacher.
Bob, I, I think Tim's gonna give us a report on that and what they're... We'll bring back the report. I would say what you're referring to, there were some pandemic-related things that took place with that. But overall, over time, Moore County Schools has always met that standard. But, but we definitely can bring back an overall, you know, some information, discuss this with the board and then see what the board's direction is.
Okay.
Okay.
Dr. Metcalf, didn't you just give us a, I think it was from your office, the, in the, or Dr. Bullard, an update on the number of students who were actually currently receiving EC services? And it had gone up significantly.
Sixteen hundred, I believe.
Yeah.
Well, what I'm, what I'm also saying is I understand the responsibility of the EC teacher to do that, but there are students in our general population which have 504s and, and IEPs which are not necess, who are not necessarily in, in EC classes. And that's where it all gets, that's where it all gets jumbled up. In order to, in order, especially our poorer kids, because our poorer kids don't have, their, their, their parents oftentimes don't advocate real well for them. And that's not the parent's fault, that's the fact that they're working nine-to-five jobs and, or, or overnight shifts, and they don't have the ability to do what a lot of the better-off parents have to do. And teachers oftentimes see a child who's in the general population who doesn't need an EC, doesn't need to be put in the EC class, but needs a 504 or needs an IEP.
Why don't we ask Tim to just include that in his report?
Yeah, please.
And I have, you know, I know that, that this budget was presented to maintain what we have by administration, but I would like to hear, hear if administration has anything that they feel will significantly make a difference that would be in addition just to maintaining what we have. And not right now, but, you know, to present later, because you all are the experts in what we need to make this happen instead of, instead of us. We're no experts, we're just throwing stuff out there, and if there are other things that we need more than maybe some of the stuff we brought out here, I'd certainly like to hear your viewpoints on it before this whole bunch of progress goes over.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I, I, Madam Chair, I, I would certainly say that I don't think you could argue with anyone about lowering class size in, in, in adding additional teachers in our schools. I don't think we'd ever get an argument on that. We'll, we'll certainly, it sounds like there's a very clear consensus on that, and we'll, we'll definitely refine that and look at what that would look like to go back to pre-K three class size, which was one to twenty-four in, in our fourth and fifth grade. And, and maybe also show what it would be for one to fifteen. One to twenty-four is not as, as significant of a cost as one to fifteen, we've heard that number thrown around. But we'll certainly bring that, that information back. Madam Chair, if I may also just comment a little bit on the Connect Academy. The only caveat with that I would just share with you that is part of our recommendation we'll be bringing back to you in March around the Connect Academy is the school number and the legality around that. The state law that was passed, if you didn't have a school number, you couldn't no longer have a virtual school. The legislature passed that law. We do have a school number, and we're requesting to activate it. We've just gotta work through that and make sure that process is available to us. But we'll be, just wanted to share that caveat with you that we, we were prepared for that and analyzing that, we'll be bringing that back to you in March.
Okay. Any, any other comments with regard to where do we go from here on our budget expansion? Okay. Next slide.
And then the only thing I have left there was a conversation which sounds like, you know, do we want to use any fund balance for next year? Consider that, do we just want to ask, see what we get from the county? And then make a determination at that point of whether we have to utilize fund balance going forward.
I, I just have a question on the fund balance. I know the county commissioners and their fund balance, they talk about there's a section that you can't really use for fund balance. that you can't really use for fund balances designated for something else. Have we done that with our fund balance or the S R funds or anything else we have in there? Specifically, say, this cannot be used for anything, it's already committed what it's going to be used for.
Yeah, so you got your assigned and unassigned. It said, you know, we had six million dollars fund balance. Two million of that is board budget resolution to hold for cash flow, for delayed reimbursements and grants. We've assigned two point one million dollars of that for current year operations. So you're down to one point nine million. We'll be asking to consider that two and a half percent increase and cover the unfunded state portion of thirteen dollars, which is another seven hundred thousand, which would carry us down to one point two million dollars of unassigned fund balance.
So we need to go up to, we need, one point two, we need to go up to two.
No, we've got your two million that we hold. You've got one point two additional over that. So we have essentially three point two million.
Just so everybody knows, that's already accounted for. So we can't use that for other stuff.
Well, one point two million you would have available for whatever.
Pay late earlier or all that, okay.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Or for other one-time costs.
Or other one-time costs.
We may identify and not have anticipated when we had the original budget passed.
Right.
Correct, yeah.
Any other comments? So at our board meeting coming up, we will, this is a budget, this is an agenda item.
This, the superintendent's proposed budget would be, yes, put that timeline back up, please.
That's what I'm shouting at you.
That would be on March seventh, Madam Chair, where Mr. Cox and I will share that proposed budget. And then the next week is when we would have the public hearing specific to comments from the public around the budget. And also get the board's feedback and direction on additional revisions we may want to make.
Okay. So it sounds as if we are all set with our next steps based on our discussion today. And we've had a really, really good discussion and some good comments and thoughts along the way. But it appears that we're set with our next steps on getting to our final superintendent's proposed budget. Okay. Any other comments?
My only comment is, I think you asked a question that wasn't, we didn't give an answer. My answer, I think, is leave the three point two million dollars as a fund balance because we've got some costs which we're not going to anticipate for next year. And I think that's only prudent.
And I kind of gathered that from the comments.
Makes sense, yeah, yeah.
That's why I didn't dwell too much on that slide.
Yeah, it makes sense, yeah. We don't want to spin down too far. Any other comments, board members? Do you have, we're now down to board comments on our agenda. Mr. Holmes?
Yeah, I think it's, you know, it's very important that we need to convey to the commissioners that this money is needed for investing. You're investing in jobs, you're investing in the future students. And I don't know how it's been conveyed in the past, but we really need to come together as a whole, as a whole community to approach them and say, look, we've come to you, we're coming to you again and again, and we need this extra money to help better our students. And I think that's very important. We just have to, we have to stress that.
Ms. Caldwell? Mr. Jensen?
Oh, no, wait.
Anything else, Mr. Levy?
Just want to appreciate and tell the board how much, I think we all should appreciate the fact that we're, our unanimity on this subject, or near unanimity on this subject should be very impressive.
Yeah, I have to segue from Mr. Holmes and Mr. Levy both. I think presenting a united front makes a real difference. And, you know, Philip, the way you put it with it's investing in jobs as well within our community. It's not, it is about the future of our children, but we're also talking about the livelihood of a large number of our population. And that's something that needs to be considered in this as well.
Yeah, I'm concerned that the superintendent, or the commissioners, they're just looking at the dollars. They're not looking, yeah, they're not looking for the betterment or what can happen with that money, good things. And that's, I don't know, that's just very troubling to me, I believe.
So our final comments, board members, go ahead and put on your calendars our April nineteenth time and date. That is extremely important. And it would be great if we could all go to our commissioners' meeting. That's when we formally present our budget to the commissioners. And typically, we have, obviously, Dr. Locklear will be taking lead, he and Mr. Cox. We have talked about some type of ad hoc, board members representing from time to time at different meetings. And I would like Mr. Levy to plan on standing with us and having some comments that afternoon, that evening.
I'd be more than happy to, Madam Chair.
And also, as we begin to close, I want to just take a moment to share that I have also asked Mr. Holmes and Ms. Caldwell to be on our safety committee-type ad hoc. Certainly, if you are not available, you don't have to go. But Dr. Powers will be sending the invitation so that you can attend those meetings throughout the year to just bring whatever you want to bring into those committees.
I've been attending them and they've been great. They've been really helpful, so.
And Ms. Thompson, before you move on, I want to come back to something Mr. Levy talked about last year, and we've not even touched on it this time. But that's increase in the digital funding and/or capital funding.
Oh, yes, oh, yes.
You know, we approached the commissioners last year. Yeah, if nothing else, an increase to accommodate inflation
Oh, yes, yes.
would be worth adding on to.
For all of those line items that we have, absolutely.
Especially calling their attention to that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which has just been laying there for, what, four or five years?
Oh, longer than that, that's what it's been.
With no inflationary, with no inflationary thing.
And then finally, I do, we received a thank you note that I would just like to take a moment to read to Moore County Schools and Board of Education. "I want to express my appreciation for the privilege of being a Moore County School employee and my gratitude for the gift of pottery I received upon my retirement. The drive-through celebration was wonderful as well, gratefully yours, Ms. Karen McCulloch." And we just received this a couple of weeks ago. So I wanted to take a minute and just to acknowledge her note that she sent to everyone. At this time, is there a motion to adjourn?
Madam Chair, move the meeting be adjourned.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.